Everyone, I think we'll get started. Will the clerk please call? Oh, no, I just need to call it to order. Right, we'll do that later, never mind. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. I think this is our first joint meeting of the Rec Committee, the Rec Department, and the City Council. I know we've been trying to get this on the books for a while, and I just want to say thank you very much. I appreciate everyone coming this evening. And I hope you have the agenda in front of you. What we thought we would do is first turn it over to the Rec Committee to talk about their work and their priorities and goals, have a discussion of that until about 6:20-ish, and then turn it over to the Rec Department to highlight their services and programs. And then around 6:35, really spend the bulk of our time looking ahead. Three areas in particular we'd like to discuss is coordinating efforts on the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center project, celebrate Tacoma in the upcoming year, and just in general, talking about how the Rec Committee can coordinate with the City Council and the Recreation Department. So I just want to say again, thank you for everyone for coming tonight. We do have our City Council meeting this evening, starting at 7:30. So unlike sometimes our City Council meetings, I will be moving us along. And I will say, if I need to do that, but we're in the middle of a conversation or we haven't quite come to closure on something, I know I think I'm safe to speak on behalf of my colleagues to say that we want to see this as an ongoing process, even if it's not in this formal setting of a joint meeting. One of the things that we have as our priority as a City Council is to be looking at how all of our committees across the city are functioning right now, and how to build stronger communications between committees and the City Council. And so we'll be doing a lot more of that. Everyone okay with the agenda? Anything else to add? Terrific. I'm going to kick it over then to Jay Keller, the Chair of the Rec Committee, to start.
Is it on?
He just stopped it.
Did I just stop it?
No, he just talked.
I just talked, okay. I don't need to touch it, okay. Push the buttons. Well, thank you for inviting us to join in. I joined the committee in 2008, so it's been a long, fun trip here. Our goals for the committee really have revolved around, one, supporting the Recreation Department and kind of monitoring what they're doing and getting great updates from the Department. When I started in 2008, we had a little bit more of a contentious relationship with the Department, and I'm very pleased to say that we've been so pleased with the way the Department has been going, great updates from Greg and from Debbie and the staff. And so that's been moving along, and we've just kind of, I think to some degree, consider ourselves a little bit of cheerleaders for the programs that are going on. So that's been a great part of it. In terms of our goals, I mean, we really have been focusing the last few months on the discussion of the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue and trying to figure out how we can be supportive of that transition as we take over control of it, from the city does, from the county, and kind of the visioning process of what it's going to look like. So that is a large part of what we've been trying to do. And I would let some of the committee members join in if they'll. Priscilla's been very involved with the Friends of, starting the Friends of the Rec Center and reaching out to different people and kind of gathering information from the community. So that's been a large priority.
Great. Would the other members of the Rec Committee, like, yeah, Priscilla, do you want to?
Unaccustomed as I am to. Well, the Rec Center, as far as I'm concerned, is just doing wonderfully. I can't believe that the city and, of course, the Rec Department have been part of the Friends, and it just makes me feel good. I feel like this is definitely going to happen, which wasn't clearly the case when we started a number of years ago, but I think it was Howard, when I was fetching to him about the Rec Center, he said I should join the Rec Committee. So I did, and it's really fun. We have a good time at our meetings. So thank you all for being in on this. I don't mean thanks for joining me. I mean, the fact that people are genuinely excited about it because it's the best thing to do warmed my heart.
Great. Thank you. Do other members of the Rec Committee want to introduce yourselves or say a few words?
My name is John Worley. I've been on the Rec Committee, I guess, three years. I was told I had to get out of the house and do something for the city, so here I am. I've got three boys who have used the Rec Department and continue to use programs of the Rec Department, and so it's kind of, it was a natural interest. And then, yeah, I've used the Rec Center too, so it's, that has been, it's been easy for me to focus on the Committee and the Rec Department. It's been a lot of fun.
And I'm Nick Dean. I think I'm the newest member, or tied for the newest member, maybe. And I'm kind of like the, I think I'm the one with the youngest kids. So, you know, I wanted to get more involved with the city, but I also wanted to do something that I had an interest in and had an interest with my family in getting more involved in. So it's been a very pleasant experience, and it feels like we are building some momentum, so that's been good, and I'm excited to be here.
Okay.
I'm Rex Daniel, turned on the Rec Committee in 2008, and I said everything that everybody else said.
Thank you very much. Howard, do you want to?
Tom Howard, I was just going to second what Priscilla and Jay said about the importance of the Rec Center. I would say that on behalf of another group that some of us are in, including these two, the Racial Equity Working Group, so for us, that's one of the top priorities in terms of racial equity in town.
Can I jump in for just a moment? And to say, this morning, I was at the By County Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission Committee, meeting, Commission meeting where they finally approved the transfer. So the paperwork, yes, it's wonderful. So it's, now it's signing off on making sure that the deeds get filed, but the vote was today, so it is settled, other than the paperwork. One of the things at the Montgomery County Planning Board last week, when they were making their recommendation to the full commission, the issue of race equity and the importance of having this facility as part of the, kind of the goals for the both counties and for the city, really came to the fore. Really wonderful statements by Commissioner Fannie Cansales. And so I'm really thrilled about the fact that the checkoff happened this morning, so we will be getting back with you in my staff. Samira Cook Gaines will be the point person as we go through the process.
Great. Anyone have any questions for the Rec Committee? I guess, well, you can go.
Do I need to push a button?
No, you don't, just talk.
No, I just look forward to more discussion, but I think it'd be good to hear it from the Rec Department first, and then get a better feel for how things are going now, and then we can talk about where we need to do better things.
Should say my name. The mayor said Priscilla, and I just started talking. I'm Priscilla Labavitz, and I've lived here for 39 years, and so that's about, and I live in Ward 1. But I wanted to say that some of the other things that the Rec Committee does include supporting Let's Play America and the programs that the Rec Department runs. And we've discussed daycare and the use of the Rec Center. It's not just like, let's get a new Rec Center. It's what kind of programming are we giving and whom is it reaching? And I think that's one of the things that makes me feel good, is that the Rec Committee is so forward-thinking about getting programs for our young people and reaching minority kids. And it seems it's mostly, or, and I like this, it seems mostly directed to the kids. We talk about the senior programs and the other ones, but I think that that's, those are sort of self-serving in a way. Yeah, I'm glad I get to take my senior bone building class. But I think that the most important thing that the Rec Committee and the Rec Department can focus on is these kids who live here and what they need.
Cindy, do you have?
Just talk? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I can do that very easily, as it's just been pointed out. And I just, having been a Rec Committee member for many years before being elected to council, I'm just very pleased with where the Rec Department and the Rec programs and the Rec Committee are and what the plans are for the future. I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you very much.
Great. All right, with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Clark, our Recreation Director, to go through the Rec Department.
Speaking of programs.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here, I'm going to highlight a few programs and things that we have within our Recreation Department, and before you, you should have a chart of our Recreation Report for FY19, which includes a lot of information on our programs. And we try to be as comprehensive as possible so that you can get a good sense of how we develop programs, the types of programs and things that we are having, who's attending, whether or not they're revenue-producing or subsidized by the city. You know, our department offers programs for a variety of residents, you know, from tots to seniors. And as any traditional recreation department, and historically, we've done pretty well with providing activities and services to our residents, as you can see, and they're well-attended. But I want to highlight a few programs that we have, you know, just not to bore you with everything that's on this list, but a few programs that we have that contain partnerships, you know, I'll explain how we came up with the program and things like that. But the first of our new programs is our After Hours Summer Program, which takes place at the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. And this program is sort of a national trend. Other departments call it, you know, different things, but it's a program basically to get, you know, teens and young adults off the streets after hours during the summertime. So we developed the program at the Recreation Center in partnership with our Police Department, you know, just to get the kids off the street in the summertime. And the program takes place on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and it runs for approximately seven weeks throughout the summer. The program is well-attended. Kids, you know, get to participate in, you know, sporting activities, mainly basketball. We have a DJ there. They get, the police actually come and participate, you know, with the kids, not dressed in full uniform, to sort of relax. So we tried to bridge that gap between the police and the young kids that's in the community. Different, a variety of type of games and things that they play in conjunction with the police and staff and each other. So we think this is a good program that we have for, just to keep the kids off the street during the summer. Another program, which is one of our newest programs, which is a part of our Youth Success Program, which is our competitive gaming program, which is, it was new to me, you know, when it was, and when it was brought to me, you know, I had to do some research in order to figure out what it was. But this is a program that we offer for our middle and high school kids, where they can actually, they actually compete against different high schools across the country. Competitive gaming is a national trend. I've seen numerous news articles. I believe Northern Virginia Community College has a team, and there's several different colleges around that have teams, and they're actually providing college scholarships for participants. And Givante brought this program. He's a champion for it, you know, the kids. We bring in gaming experts to talk to the kids about the gaming industry. They take trips to, they took a trip to one of the colleges to see what a college team is like. They were supposed to, but they didn't get to do it this year, but in future years, they'll be able to attend the National Gaming Conference, which takes place down at the National Harbor, which is right here in our area. And for our kids that competed this year, there were a total of 300 high school teams nationwide, and our team this year came in 33rd place. So they did a really good job, you know, as a part of this program. Another program from our Youth Success, I want to, is a partnership between the department and the middle school. We went and met with the administration at the middle school and asked, you know, how can we help and what can we help with? And in speaking with the principal, we came up with a, one of the programs that we actually used to have that went away, so we actually brought it back, was a mentoring program that takes place at lunchtime. And this is a program that the kids have to be recommended by the Gatherings Council in order to participate. So we want to, you know, we try and grab some of the kids that are headed in the wrong direction and provide them mentoring opportunities. We give them, you know, different incentives and things like that for academic success and behavioral success. We bring in different speakers to talk to them during lunch, and we actually communicate with them. This year also, with that group, we put them in our Winter Basketball League as a team, and one of our staff, actually, Givante, actually coached the team as part of it, just to, you know, gain unity and things like that. So that's a program that, you know, another program that we think is going really well. The name of it is Let's Chat.
Let's Chat.
Yeah, the name of it is Let's Chat. It's a teen and youth success program. Yeah, that one is not on. The middle school, that takes place at Tacoma Park Middle School. Yeah, the After Hours Basketball Program is actually, is on the sheet. Yes. Another program is Think Tank, which is a partnership that we have with the New Hampshire Avenue Towers Apartments, and it's a program designed to increase academic success, basically an after-school program, tutoring program for the kids that live in that building. And staff provide homework assistance, and we've also had health and wellness workshops for the kids that participate in that. So, of course, that's a part, the program runs throughout the school year, 3:30 through 5:00 p.m. You said ages? That program is for youth and teens as well, so, yeah. One of our most, I want to say, has becoming a real popular program, which is a national trend as well, which is our Senior Camp. And, you know, Paul has done a real, a really good job with this camp. Senior Camp is a national trend, which seniors are participating in summer camps, just like our kids. And this year's theme was an art theme, where they took art-related trips, did art projects, had speakers come in related to the arts. They went to, of course, it includes visual and performing arts. They went to a play as part of it as well, so the seniors really enjoy it, you know, and we appreciate Paul for putting that together and having the foresight to, you know, to think about it and, you know, just to try that national trend here in the city. So each session of the camp that we've had was full, so it's extremely popular. Another program that we have that I want to highlight is our Smart Technology Program for seniors, where it's a program where seniors get an opportunity to learn how to use a smartphone. It includes, also includes instruction on social media, you know, so that, you know, seniors can learn how to navigate, you know, away around the net and social media and things like that. So that's another good program we have. With all of these programs, we have several partnerships. We do a lot of partnerships with different organizations, and those partnerships are internal partnerships with the Police Department, of course, for our After Hours Program. We partner with the library, and they offer a computer class for our seniors. We also partner with the Housing and Economic Development Department for the Success Fair, as well as a program that we have coming up, Code Partners, which is coding for young people.
So just one thing that we haven't really mentioned. Is these programs are packed. There's waiting lists, there's kids that want to be in these programs. They represent everybody, and it's exciting. We have to keep going and trying to find ways to expand the services for these programs because the demand is really high.
Additional partnerships include, we partner with Docs in Progress on various filmmaking programs for young people, for teens as well as seniors. They've done a senior camp with us, as well as teen camps centered around filmmaking. We partner with Art for the People on different art projects and classes and things. Avenus Healthcare comes in and does various health screenings for residents. We partner with the Montgomery County RSVP, and they actually provide free instruction for our Bone Builders Class, which is one of our most popular classes for our seniors. And, you know, that's been going on for some time. You know, we partner with Master Gardeners for the University of Maryland Extension Program, but so, you know, that's just a small scale of who we partner with on various programs to provide services to our residents, so. All of our programs as well, you know, we develop them, you know, keeping in mind the council priorities and what we're charged to do. So, you know, with the new programs and the Youth Success Department as a whole, it came out of, you know, the council priorities and, you know, dedicating services to make sure that we provide services to, outreach services to youth and young adults, so teens and young adults.
And thank you, Mr. Clark, for mentioning that, because I think, you know, even on the youth success thing, I do want to mention that there were... um, on the youth success thing, I do want to mention that there were, um, many residents who were involved about six or seven years ago now, which I can't imagine, the time goes by so quickly, really looking at the youth programming here, youth success, um, and, um, one of the things that the department did along with the City Council was hold the, um, Youth Success Day, and really hear from young people about the programs and things that, um, they need and want to see in the city, and listening to you now, I'm so glad to hear that you've been able to put in place so many of the different programs that we heard from the youth themselves that they were looking for and they want to see, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, and just thank you, uh, Debbie, for all the work that you did a couple of years ago on that, it just popped up on my Facebook page again, I was like, oh my gosh. Um, so to kick us off, I just have one question, um, is, do you see, um, an area that, and this goes for the, the Rec Committee as well, um, that there are any gaps or things or services that you see looking into the future, um, you think we need to consider?
Yeah, one of the things that we've been, um, discussing internally is making sure that we get, um, a diverse group of participants in our programs, because we, we don't believe that we're reaching, um, some of our, um, all of our, all of the community in our programs. We, uh, we have started to, um, put certain, uh, advertisements for, for programs in our heart, um, so that we can re- reach more of, uh, the Ethiopian population, um, and some in Spanish as well, um, so that we can try and see more, um, of that population participate in programs as well. So that's one of the areas, um, that we've discussed internally, um, to try and figure out a way to reach out to those communities and have, um, you know, members of the community participate from there, so.
Great. And I know, um, you mentioned the, um, the mentoring program and other things, and are there other programs that you're doing outside of our sort of recreation build, like our community center here and our rec center there that actually go to where some of the groups are that we're trying to engage?
Um, we, we have a, uh, we actually utilize the Presbyterian, the, um, church, um, for our, uh, cooking class, um, for, for teens, um, we have, um, thought about, we haven't, um, actually put the plan in, into place yet about, um, regarding, uh, some of our, um, active programs for aerobics and tachy and things of that nature out in the park.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, um, those are some things that we've, um, discussed and, and just haven't had an opportunity to put in place yet.
But Givante's been going out to different apartment buildings.
Yes, yes.
Right, that's, yeah, that's. That's been a mill-step difference from the past years.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what I was talking about.
Okay, 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 okay. Yeah, Givante is doing, um, wonderful work, I, I, um, see, uh, different members of the community all the time, and his name consistently comes up with, um, you know, getting out to, uh, you know, different apartment buildings, um, um, you know, local businesses, I mean, he's, definitely gets out to, uh, to various parts of the community, you know, the office services and programs, so.
Okay. Councilmember Sears, you look like you're really.
First, I just want to say thank you, um, both the, the Rec Committee and, and, and you, um, the Recreation Department for all of the work that you've done. Um, case in point, the mayor and I met with, um, was that like a year ago, two years ago? A while back, um, with residents in Hampshire Towers, and one of the things that was communicated was, we have a lot of kids that are kind of.
Their parents haven't made it home yet.
All energy.
And they have a lot of energy, and they're having a lot of fun in the hallways after school, and is there anything you all could do to try to help us with corralling the kids? Um, so I am so happy that you all have been able to, to go into that building and actually start having some constructive after-school activities for kids in the building. Um, I think that, as was mentioned earlier, is one of the pivotal ways of making sure that we're reaching, um, the kids, quite frankly, that need it most. Um, so I definitely, um, fully support additional programming. Okay, as my phone starts to ring. Is that me, or is that you?
Yeah.
I think that's me. That is me.
It's a Hattie Wood six resident.
Is it? Is that it? I'm saying thank you so much for saying what you're saying right now. Um, but, uh, just making sure that we can, can continue doing those types of programming in other buildings throughout the city, and I think this is going to be increasingly important, um, as we start to talk about the transition during, you know, the, the develop, the rec center development. Um, so, you know, trying to forge those relationships now will make our lives a lot easier, um, when we're dealing with construction, so definitely would encourage us to continue to try to reach out to other buildings, um, in the community that may have, um, community rooms or space that we may be able to start to leverage now. Um, another question, um, is about, you know, that, that I, I, I consider the rec development to be a two-phase project, right? So you have the first phase, where we get access to the building, um, and what would that look like? Um, are we necessarily, do you all anticipate, um, any new needs or expenses or wanting to do things slightly differently now that you have the ability to actually do some slight alterations to the building that we have right now? So I guess one question that I have for, for both groups are, are there some things that, or some needs that you see in terms of the current infrastructure? It's not ideal, um, but some things that we may want to tackle sooner rather than later, keeping in mind that about four years from now, we probably will hopefully be breaking ground on something new. Um, but I, I, I do want to, to kind of start having those conversations, um, because I do think that they will likely have budget implications, either, um, for the city or as we, um, the council start to lobby the county, um, it would be helpful to kind of know what some of those specific needs are, um, so that we will be able to better try to help garner the resources. So I don't know if you all have given any thoughts to that.
Yeah, we got a number of discussions about this, of, of one, how do we not lose programming when the, when the build's going on? Uh, that's a crucial thing. I mean, as, as you look at the spreadsheet that, that Greg and Debbie have circulated, you see the, the breadth of the programs that are going on now, and I think we've been very conscious about, well, we don't want to lose what we already have that are successful programs, but what could be the possibility of adding some more things? There've been discussions with folks that have younger families of, could there be space for parents to actually sit and chat while their kids are doing stuff, as opposed to now where you're kind of pressed up against the wall, uh, so things like that, and, um, it's going to be the big challenge of how, how do we do a good transition, and how do we keep what we have and maybe add a few more things to it, so.
Um, one of the things that we, um, have thought about, um, is right now, our facility opens, um, early only on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and I believe we open, um, at noon for our senior programs. Um, so there is room for program expansion, um, with the building opening earlier. Um, with the building open earlier, we can provide and service more, um, seniors, um, as well as, uh, the tot and homeschool population, there's a large homeschool population, um, here in the city, so, um, those are some things, some areas where we thought that we can, um, improve upon. Um, you know, one thing a- about the, uh, the building is, is that it's not ideal to have, um, a lot of things going on at one time. Um, um, there were meetings there a few weeks ago, and I'm pretty sure you all, uh, felt that.
It was very enjoyable.
Yeah.
It's very enjoyable.
You felt that. Um, yeah, so we try, we try to make sure that, um, things work, um, so, um, you know, if you go there on a Saturday and there's a dance program in the back room and something's going on in the gym, the parents from the dance program are sitting in the lobby, the small lobby right there, where staff bring out chairs and things, so, um, you know, of course, there's, there's a lot of room for improvement, um, but, you know, I, I would think that the immediate, um, need would be to provide more programs for seniors and, and tots and the homeschool population.
If I can mention though, that, that was actually proposed. Um, internally, but because of tight budget year, we did not budget for extra hours of staff there, and many of the kinds of programs, as you look at the sheet that talks about our expenses, and, and you see which programs, there's city subsidy, many of the programs that we have over there are city subsidy, what, these aren't revenue generating programs that would help cover the costs of staffing and, and some infrastructure improvements, even if they're minor, recognizing that we'll be doing construction in the future. Um, we have had, uh, a meeting over at the center, knowing that the transfer of the property will happen very shortly, to look at, we can put up signs, we can change how the parking lot works, we have a little bit of things that we, you know, might be able to do, I think that's something that, you know, we'd look creatively at. Um, there's tough things we can't touch yet, um, I will, I will mention that while we were over there, um, one of our employees who lives in Tacoma Overlook with her baby in a stroller came down the dirt path through the trees, uh, at the back of the building, and that is a major cut through for people, but it is not ADA accessible, it's probably not cost-effective to do it and make it ADA accessible before there's a plan. Nevertheless, there's some issues there, and so if there were a particular demand, it's something we could look at and bring to the council, I think. Um, but I, but I do want to raise the issue of the rates that we charge for programs. We increased the programs a little bit this year, we finally have seniors paying five bucks for things, when before it was all free, um, and we obviously have scholarships if somebody needs it, but to me, that's an area where I think the Rec Committee could, could provide some good insight about, is this the kind of, um, charge for the various programs, what's the, what's, what's desirable to help meet the needs of our community while also getting adequate revenue? So that's something that they may not be prepared to discuss here, but I think is a good conversation to have over the coming year.
So this, can I just get a point of clarification?
Point of clarification, this is a proposed?
No, this is the, uh, point twenty charges, based on the discussion we had at budget.
Okay.
And it's, it's mostly a ten percent increase with some minor costs for senior programs.
And we had. And with scholarship programs built in.
We always have.
Every, yes, every program.
And this is the first fee increase we ha- have had in.
Over twelve years.
Yeah, yes.
Just for people who are tuning in new.
Yeah.
Just a reminder, we have not increased the fees for twelve years, and this is the first time.
Right, and, and we, and, you know, part of this is that we recognize that we want to really provide services, not, not, and we're not particularly competing with some of the, um, more expensive private programs, that we, we offer something a little bit different.
Great. Since we moved in, yeah, council member.
Mr. Clark, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm excited to see all the great things that you're doing in the department. Uh, I have a question about process. Once you guys come up with an idea, what role does the Rec Committee play? Do they vet that idea? Do you guys, you know, talk about it? What's their role?
Um, if.
You could have plugged something.
Yeah, yeah. We, we, we meet, yeah, we meet, yeah, we meet with the Rec, the Rec Committee, um, monthly, and we, you know, run idea, program ideas, um, you know, of course, we partner on, you know, a lot of programs, um, together, um, so, you know, we have a good relationship and good communication, um, you know, if they don't think that something is going well, if they have questions, and, you know, of course, they are raised, um, and, and, you know, we provide, um, you know, responses, so I, I, I think we have a good process, um, you know, for programs and, um, for implementation of things, so.
You, you mentioned that now you have someone that's going into the apartment buildings, have you guys set up a system of how a council member might com- communicate with that, uh, employee, to have them go in and talk to residents?
Um, no, we don't have a, a particular system, um, but you feel, uh, I can, you know, of course, provide that information for, um, and actually have Givante reach out, um, you know, to each of you, um, you know, regarding, you know, what facilities or what places in your ward, your particular ward, um, actually needs services, um, you know, and see if we can go and meet with them, um, and try and figure out, you know, what, what services we can provide and we can bring over.
Okay, great, because I had a, a resident meeting yesterday with, uh, the residents of Sligo View, and they would love to have someone from the Rec Department, but we had housing in the Police Department, but not the Rec Department.
Right, okay.
And Givante is not full-time, correct?
Yes, he is full-time. He is career, yes, yes, he's career. Yep, he's career.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, okay.
Councilmember Kovar, and then Seamus.
Thank you, and thanks, um, both to the department and the committee folks, appreciate it, and I know that, uh, knowing some of the people on the committee, that their people have been involved in these things for a long time, so it's, it's very helpful. Just a few questions, one, and Mr. Clark, maybe you can answer this, on the chart, is it possible to get at the bottom or somewhere later separately, the total number of participants? Understanding, of course, that some people double up, but I, I bet the numbers would be incredible, and it would just be nice to be able to say.
The total number of participants for all of our classes?
Yeah, or however you could measure it.
Yes.
I'm not sure if it would make sense to then add in the people who show up at the, you know, the Halloween parade or, or whatever, but the ones where they're there specifically for the class, it just would be an interesting thing to know.
Okay, okay.
Um, one of the questions that I know we've done some in the past, but, but not a lot, is programs for disabled people or developmental disabled people, and maybe you can talk a little bit about your thoughts on that, and if there are additional steps that we should be taking. Uh, overall, I think that, you know, the way you've targeted this is, is very good towards, um, kids and toward underserved, uh, communities, I think that might be one area where there's still room to, to do more.
Right. Right now, all of our, uh, programs are open for, you know, for everyone.
Yeah.
Um, you know, uh, you know, they're open for people, uh, with disabilities as well as, you know, a regular folks. Um, we actually just had a training, um, with our staff, um, and I'm gonna let, uh, Debbie actually talk about that, because that's something that she led, um, and the direction that we're going in, uh, with that, so.
Thank you. Um, so we had a training today as part of our pre-service for behavior modification and behavior management, so we asked Montgomery County Park and Planning to come out and to lead a one-hour session with our summer camp staff and the, the career staff that lead the summer camp, um, to discuss the difference between Asperger's, autism, OCD, et cetera, et cetera, to discuss what triggers someone with a particular disability, how to reconvene them back into our program when, um, they're maybe not feeling the program or not, you know, they're, they're done with it, they've hit their limit from whatever reason, even from just walking in and being sent off at breakfast before they got in our building. Um, so it was a very interactive session, and there was lots of questions afterwards, and we're going to follow up with additional career training in the fall, because obviously summer is our busy time for all recreation departments, so they're going to come back and teach the career staff a more in-depth training on what we should be saying, um, people with disabilities versus some other type of language, um, what we should be doing, what is required by the ADA law, how we can, um, work with that and make sure that we provide services, uh, for everyone.
Um, in addition to that, um, we have, um, we provide a grant for, to the Spirit Club, um, to offer programs and services for people with disabilities, um, and I believe that is a TR program, um.
Say what TR is. Therapeutic Recreation.
Yeah, therapeutic recreation, I'm sorry, yeah, that is a therapeutic recreation program. Um, we, as, as a part of our programs, um, and an accommodation that we offer is, um, a companion, uh, we, we offer an ap- companion agreement, so if someone, um, needs assistance, um, in a, to participate in one of our programs, um, they can have someone, um, that they're familiar with, uh, complete the companion agreement, um, so that they can help them, um, throughout whatever class or process or program or trip or whatever we're having, so, um, as long as there's space available, so, um, those, that's what we do, um, we aren't, um, we don't have the capacity to, to provide TR services, um, therapi- therapeutic recreation services, um, you know, or a ther- recreation program, um, you know, as part of what we do right now, so the, the.
Well, I appreciate that, I think, you know, mainstreaming. Is really great, and I'm, I'm glad that you're looking at that, I think maybe for, for the council at some point in the future, we might want to think about how to expand programs that are just targeted to that population, but, but I appreciate that, and I'm glad to hear that you're, uh, you had that training. Um, I think I just had one other question, um, whether you have statistics on where people are from, I don't mean from the city or not from the city, but like within the city, I know that you draw from all over, but I'm just wondering whether that's ever really been kind of.
Yes, we do, we do have the, we do have the ability through our active net registration system, it's actually an opt-in question, um, so those that opt in, uh, we can actually tell how many participants are from each ward, um, and we can get that information, I don't know if we can get that information by program, but we can get it just a total number of, this is how. this is how many ward four, ward three, and so on.
I think it would be interesting.
We can definitely get that, we can get that out to you.
Thank you.
Could you also talk about the, the? Training that you coordinated with the LGBTQ training that we recently had?
We had a request to expand our gender options in our active net system, which is our active net is our registration software to take our programs. So we worked with L A Y C, which is Latin American Youth Center. And they provided a half-day training, I think it was, was it a half-day? Half-day.
It was a long.
It, it was a long half-day.
Three-quarters day?
But it gave us a lot of knowledge. We opened it up to recreation staff and other career staff throughout the different departments. So we had a good mix of representation from all different levels within different departments as well. And so we had a great training about what to say, what not to say, using pronouns and not assuming. And since then, we've opened up our active net software for two, nine different options instead of just male, female. And with very little marketing, we have seven people that have chosen to switch that over on their own with little effort of pushing it and advertising that it's out there. So they were, they were anticipating coming to do a quick training with us for pre-service, but that didn't end up happening with our summer camp. But we have a 101 class that we basically took at base level. And we hope to have them come back in the fall to see how we've incorporated that. And so we have a flyer that's coming out on social media soon that will have, that will address some different things. We have some different, we have pronouns at the end of our emails sometimes you'll see now, so.
I noticed that the other day.
Yeah, so just little things like that that we've incorporated from learning, from that training. We've, we've changed a lot of our forms, so our forms don't say now he or she will do this, that you say he, she would do this, so now it says they will do this, so. Very exciting stuff.
Yeah, I have a question for the department. The last few years, I think that you've had a program of taking kids to visit historically black colleges and universities. I don't see it on here. Did I miss it?
You know what, this? This was just for one year. We, you're absolutely right, we have done that in many years past. One year we even went to North Carolina for multiple different colleges. In the past two years, I think we've gone to Bowie State. And so this includes information on just this year. And we only had one or two participants register, so they ended up choosing to go on their own.
Councilmember Siemens and then Kostak.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Clark for his leadership and also the, the rec committee. It's kind of heartwarming to me to see the way that this whole group of programs, the recreation programs has grown through the past few years and the, kind of the synergy that has developed between the department and the committee and how closely you work together now. I think you were working closely together before, but not as, always in the same direction. It's, it's really, as I say, heartwarming to see the, the change and really the maturity of the recreation programs that has developed through this partnership between you and the recreation committee. So I thank you all. I'm not gonna get into it. Sounds like the, the diversity issue is something that you certainly all recognize is a, a next step in the process. So I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that, only to recognize that, that's something that I think all of us, you know, a goal that we all look towards. I'm glad, really glad to hear about the, the closer relationship that you're having with some of your programs and the police department. I think that there's a great room for, for more of that. And I look forward to seeing that next year in your report where the police, some of the officers are more involved in, in many of the programs. I think that's a key thing. I've spent some time recently just talking with some of the youth in our, in our community. And there's a lot of feelings that have developed over the years that, that are out of touch with the current situation. I think it'll be helpful for the, for both the police and for the youth to get to know each other a little better.
Can I, can I, can I say something to that point? Alicia does a great job of involving the police department in a lot of her programs. I only highlighted one, the partnership at the, the rec center regarding the after-hours. But she has special events where she invites the police department to come and participate. And they actually participate with the kids, they play with the kids. So the relationship is, is, is growing, we're including them more. I just didn't highlight them.
And the police department reaches out also to the rec department. So they, they have monthly meetings with the four school principals in the area, and they invited the rec department, so they're always involved in that. And some of the other activities that, that the police department does, they reach out to, to our staff, which is really nice.
That's fantastic, that's what we're looking for, what I'm looking for, and I'm glad to see it's developing. Pardon? Yeah, check that box off. No, it's not, it's not a checkbox yet. Yeah, I've got the box drawn now. And then the other thing I'm struck with as I look at your chart and listen to your presentation is the need for more, right? There's a lot of good programs out there that you're doing, but there's, the, the need is far greater than what we're able to accomplish. And this is a, this is something I, I turn to the committee for. And I wonder, you know, how we can look at expanding capacity. And what strikes me is maybe the, you know, when I look at the programs you have, it seems like a great opportunity to write a major grant request, because you've got some good performance, you have a big need, right? You have the capacity to do it if you had the funds to do it. And I'm wondering if, if the rec committee couldn't help to formulate a plan to get some grants to help, to help us in that direction. And part of what I'm thinking about is, and let's look at what I consider to be the major area, which is the mentoring programs that you do, such as over on New Hampshire Avenue. The, if you look at the statistics from Montgomery County Public Schools, there's a fantastic need, a great need. I shouldn't say it's fantastic, but it's great. And I wonder if the recreation committee couldn't help by developing metrics and, and determining ways to do the measurements so that we could demonstrate the, the success of these programs, which again could be something that's used to, to get grants. Now, who actually ends up writing the grant request? Do you know, I think that's something for the grant committee to think about and make recommendations. Maybe it's to come back to the council and say, gee, we need somebody to work on this. Or, or maybe it's something the grant, or the recreation committee can do themselves, I don't know. Anyways, that's just my thoughts on the subject. I think we need more.
Councilmember Kostak?
Thank you. I want to reiterate everyone's thanks to both the committee and the rec department. I know we have a couple more things on the agenda, so I'll keep this relatively brief. First of all, I think everything we're hearing tonight, there are so many positive stories. And we often hear, especially during budget time, people wondering what their tax dollars are being used for. And I, I feel like there's a lot of potential here to share the stories about the impacts that these programs have on the kids and the seniors who are participating in them. So I would love to see, and I, and I think that could correspond with grant applications as well, because you would have some of those stories to share. I would love to see some more of that getting out, whether it's on social media or the newsletter or presentations or whatever, you could think creatively about it. But I would love to see more of these stories shared regularly. The other question I have, looking at the chart here, is there's a column that states 50% or more are participants of color. And I, I remember, if I remember right, during our conversations at budget time, I thought you noted that there wasn't a place for race and ethnicity in the application. So I'm wondering how you were able to determine this estimate?
This is from, yeah, we don't have a, a place as of now on our electronic registration system to capture that information, but we have put it in the request and other recreation departments have put it in the request as well, so hopefully it's coming. But we ask staff, because most of these programs are, you know, led by staff and, you know, staff supervise and monitor, so we, we ask our staff members. So, and, you know, with most of the programs, of course, you know, we get, I mean, they're right there and we get pictures and things of that nature, so we can, we can see whether or not, you know, people of color are participating in the programs.
So this is based right now on estimates from staff members, from what you know? And then moving forward, you'll be able to collect the data from the application process?
Yes, hopefully. But, you know, we have our fingers crossed that it will, it will take place, so.
Great, yeah, thank you. And I also, I liked the city manager's suggestion to maybe have the committee look into the pricing and the fees as well as additional programs that might target different populations in the city and just serve, make sure we're serving everyone. Thank you.
New Hampshire Rec Center. And wanted you to spend a few minutes talking about that a little bit more, how the rec department, committee, all of us working together, moving forward on this project. And in particular, I had a question, since we do have people who wear many hats sitting around the table. Also, if you have an idea of how other groups outside of like the, the council, the staff, the rec department, the, the rec committee can, can be all working together. We have a lot of interest in the rec center. It's going to take a great deal of work. And I didn't know if there were already thoughts on how we can together work and move it forward. Or maybe that's something to think about in other meetings. Yeah.
I, I, there are a number of other groups in the community, some of which also have overlapping members, like the racial equity working group that is discussing, also discussing the rec center very intently. And there's, I put a little bit on the Tacoma for All. And, I mean, it, it hasn't been a major subject of discussion, but at least one person joined because he wanted to, wanted to work on the, on the center. So I think there's, and then of course, there are community groups that are involved, like at Hampshire Towers and Cheer, and those people who are already represented on all the, these don't include a lot of people whose names aren't already on the lists. But there's certainly more that we should be talking with. And when we've been talking a little bit about outreach, which is for the, for the new rec center, and that's gonna be a big issue. How do we find out what the community wants? And how do we get lots of people from all parts of the community to weigh in on it? So how do we do the outreach? And I, I'm intrigued, was intrigued by this idea that the police department meets with the heads of the schools in Tacoma Park. And that would be a very nice thing for us to be able to do so that we could reach the, the peop, the parents of the kids who could go to those schools. Because otherwise, it's gonna be very hard to engage everybody, to talk with immigrant communities and to get people to answer questions.
Anything else, anyone other points on moving forward on the work at the rec center?
I mean, I think one of the big challenges we talked about is, you know, really getting the rec center built as something that the entire city uses and looks as a great resource, as opposed to just the, the rec center that's over there, that's used by that ward over there. So I think that's gonna be a part of the conversation, is what, what do people want to see in it? And to some degree, realistically, what we can afford to do and what can go in that space. I remember years ago, we had a meeting with kind of a youth group to kind of talk about what was gonna go in a rec center. And there were the kids that kind of got it of like, okay, there's what you can do and what you can't do. And there was one older kid who was like, yes, I want a, I want a full gym and I want to have 24-hour access to it. I want to have my own key to it so I can go whenever I want. And, and most of the kids looked at him like, you're crazy. But that's part of the element of, of folks that will deal with people that look at this via, why, why can't we build a, a 20-story rec center that, you know, has a pool, has a gym, has everything to it? And that's not gonna be possible. So I think managing those realistic expectations is important. But I think it's also gonna be important to figure out, how do we reach every ward to get some input so that people feel like they've been heard and feel like there's gonna be a rec center for them too? Without breaking the bank.
Well, moving on to the other item we did want to discuss tonight, or begin the conversation tonight. As a number of you know, because we had conversations during the budget, the decision was made to think about how we could combine Celebrate Tacoma that happens each year around Independence Day celebration in Tacoma Park. And realizing there are obstacles to that and opportunities in that the Independence Day, get off your phone. Parade is, yes, I know. Is actually not run by the city, but by a committee of residents and volunteers. And so I don't know if you all have had the chance to start thinking about, what are some ways that we can make sure we still have a vibrant Celebrate Tacoma and actually even build upon and make it even better in the future?
Well, we, we kind of talked about, you know, the origins of Celebrate Tacoma. And it was really around the fact that there were a lot of different community events from the, the street festival and the folk fest and things like that that didn't reach a large chunk of the population. And so some of this is figuring out if we're gonna configure this, the July 4th, how do we bring in people that came to celebrate Tacoma but didn't come to any other events? And that's gonna take some outreach. It's gonna take, you know, the programming of how do we have some of the bands, some of the entertainment that we've had at Celebrate Tacoma? And how do we, it, it's a different time of year. I mean, July 4th, I, I'm one of those people, I've lived here for 30 years. I've been in Tacoma Park twice for July 4th. It just, it's always a weekend we go away. And I'm gonna be away this weekend, or this year's. So I kind of feel badly about that, but there's some things.
You started a new tradition.
Yeah, I may have to do that. So that's one of the challenges of, of kind of figuring out, what do we gain, what do we lose? I know we gained budgetarily on this, but I'm a little concerned about how do we, how do we keep the element of, of Celebrate Tacoma that made it such a great vibrant thing? I think the second year I was there, there was a guy who came to me, Ethiopian, who had lived in Tacoma Park for 20 years and said, wow, this is the first time I've really felt the city supporting a, a very diverse celebration. And that, that just really made it special to me.
One of the other challenges is location, because this year there won't be any fireworks, so. In fact, the evening celebration for July 4th will be in front of Pony Branch in this building, just as Celebrate Tacoma is. But if, if there, if there are fireworks next year, they may be held at Tacoma Academy. And then the following year, that probably will go back to Tacoma Park Middle School. So, so coordinating Celebrate Tacoma and the evening program for 4th of July is a question mark.
And to some degree, it's the same challenge we've had with MLK of having, you know, the workday during the day and then the evening program. And it does seem to be kind of a different group of people that go to each.
Event fatigue. People with, marching in the parade or standing in the hot sun in the parade. So that's. in the parade. So that's done. Then we're going to do something else. And most of the people want to melt away for a while. And I think that's a lot to do on a day for anybody. And my kids would probably kill me by the end of the day if we had two things going on. So that, I think that's, for me, I'd be like, I'd have to pick one or the other or something. It would, it would be hard to just imagine putting that much effort into two different things, you know, and two such big things, you know, on one day.
One of the things I just, I think was part of the discussion was that Celebrate Tacoma was very staff, staff-heavy in terms of arranging and staffing. And so as we talk about how do we serve the community, part of this does have to do with our staff capacity. And however this, whether this is the right solution, or something else is the right solution, it is a very time-demanding activity from city staff. And the question is, does, is it helping to advance something significantly? And so I think that was part of the reason that it was being discussed.
And I think also, like, the, the city, as a city council, and I'm sure the rec department, all of us, I mean, if it doesn't work to combine it with Independence Day, that is also something, feedback, and we are happy to work together to think about, is there another time to, or another event to maybe combine it with, or do other things, or revisit this decision? I think, as the city manager said, the feedback we were getting as a city council was how much city staff time was being spent on this, and how that had evolved over time. And so, yeah, just wanting to think about, and it doesn't have to be the 4th of July parade, it could, or day, it could be some other time.
Why is combining the events a cost-saving measure if it's still going to require staff, I guess?
I think that the, I mean, there's a lot that goes to reserving the street and changing the, you know, putting up some of the, the base information, the base work, that when you have several different events, you have to, you know, do all of that as well. So if it's something that's, where our staff shows up to help run the games, if there's a stage already set up, and then you can have the international dancers or whatever, then, then that's a bit of a saving. So I think that was the, that was part of the concept. And one of the things, just, I guess, my view, is that a whole lot of different people do show up for the Independence Day parade. It's a, it is a community thing. It, it doesn't feel the same as the Folk Festival. It doesn't feel the same as the Street Festival. So that, I think that was part of that discussion. But again, it was also kind of a, by the seat of our pants guess about what might work.
I mean, I think that was also, like, one of the things, one of the things I dislike about the Tacoma Park parade, I'll just put out there, I know Councilmember Seaman shares it, I've shared this one, is where the sort of grant, the seats end. And so lots of people stop marching in the parade here in front of, in front of Piney Branch, and don't go all the way to Sligo Creek. And there are a lot of people who live in the apartments, who sit out, and not, the whole parade doesn't go down there. And I think one of my things was thinking, like, if we thought about combining Celebrate Tacoma with the Independence Day parade, is there a way of actually, then more intentionally thinking about, how do we extend that parade route? How do we bring the piece of, from Lee to, to Sligo, really into our 4th of July celebration? Which I, in my mind, 4th of July, I think, should be about celebrating the, all, our entire community, and everyone who's here. And, and Jane knows this, I said this to him, I mean, you know, thinking about how it won't happen this year, the budget got cut for it at the federal level, but how they do the, the Folk Festival on the mall. And always, like, highlight different cultures in different places. So, but again, we're looking at this as a partnership and thinking about how we can work with you all. And so if there seem to be too many downsides or impediments, we don't want to lose why Celebrate Tacoma was first envisioned. And so looking to you for recommendations on that. And I think then the last topic was, how do we want to continue working together in the last few minutes we have? You know, you're having these formal meetings is one thing, but we, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, wanting to see how we can, you know, better be kind of in contact with each other, think about the work that you're doing, and the work that we're doing on the city council. So, I don't know if anyone had any ideas or feedback on?
I think because people get information from different sources, I would just welcome, as, as city council members, hear things about the recreation programs, or have suggestions, if they could feed it back to us as committee members. I mean, I think you've gotten the sense that we have, I think, a very good relationship with the staff now. It's, it's been nice, because Greg has kind of rotated people in to our meetings every month. And so we've gotten to meet all the staff on the, on the, on the rec department. And so that's been great. But I think, you know, sometimes council members have some questions, and we may or may not hear them unless you kind of ask. So please feel free to do that.
Councilwoman Malin, do you have something?
I'd, I'd like to get the rec committee's feedback on what are the best ways to get you all in, keep you all involved in the rec center process. So it seems to me like that's the obvious next step for a partnership that works with everybody together. But how you do that, other than just saying it, is, is what I'd like to get some feedback on. Maybe borrowing from the energy planning process, maybe a couple of strategy sessions with key groups before an opening up of a big public process. Maybe something else.
How do you communicate with each other, members of the council? I mean, if you're having, we're going to name it.
Wiggle the fingers.
In a keyboard, like.
Everyone has their own way. They like to be communicated to. I'm just going to say that. And I have been able to figure out how to reach each and everyone.
So if council, the council or council members want to have a discussion of, of the rec center, and whether to put portables there, for example, how would you talk to each other about that? And is there a way that we could be brought in to emails on that topic?
Yeah. I mean, I think, Councilwoman Kovar, do you want to?
I can't respond for all of them, and that's part of what it is. And we, we can't, we can't, we can't meet and discuss things except in public if there's more than four of us. So there's plenty of conversations that take place electronically. But anything formal has to be kind of formal. And so that's just the way it works. And I mean, and I've certainly found, I know Suzanne wants to say something, but I certainly found, I mean, Priscilla, and Jay, and Howard, and a lot of the folks, we do hear from them all the time. And I think that's, that's great. And I'd like to talk some, not tonight, but just about with the New Hampshire Avenue project, you know, what the schedule should be like. Because I've heard a lot of different things about that, and I respect the different views about how long it might take. But I'm just a little nervous about having it take longer than it needs to. And so that, to me, would be one of the things that'd be great to interact with everybody about.
If I can just address that, I think the councils to set policy, and they make budget decisions, if there's some goals, or programs, or needs that are raised, then it's useful to hear from staff about what might be the options, and the cost of those options, and how might we do that. And then it comes to the council for a discussion. And so that's, I think, the, kind of the process that we go through. I, you know, Samirka Gaines is not here, but she's been thinking a lot about ways to involve people, what could a good process be? How to use the $70,000 that was set aside for consultant services on the, on the community outreach and, and organization process. One of the parties that hasn't been mentioned are the folks that live right there. They're critical. And, you know, I, I do think that the rec committee isn't as actually representative of the community as it may, might, should be to get that kind of input. And so part of it is just making sure that we do really intentionally reach lots of different people in the way that they want to be reached, to be able to provide some effective communication. I'm looking forward very much to moving it along in a good way. But it's a special process, because this is a special site. And so, you know, it will be a lot of parties involved in it. And, and we want to have a system where people can follow along, plug in, and give good recommendations throughout. That's a lot to go forward, not tonight.
And I would just say also, Priscilla, I think you, you kind of hit on something that in the last couple of weeks even have, is, is like, when, when you talk about ideas, and when, how you kind of like, just bounce around ideas, and then sometimes things get ahead of you. And everyone's like, oh, they're talking about this, or the council's doing this. And so I do think it is a balance, you know, about when ideas are brought to the council. And, you know, I know a number of us do like to be invited to when, when groups are meeting, or committees are meeting, to hear what you're thinking about. Councilmember Kovar said, more than four, you know, more than three of us can't be there at a time. But we do, I will say thank you to my colleague, Councilwoman Circe, who was able to attend the meeting you held with County Councilmember Albinaz about, and, you know, came back and said, hey, this is what happened at that meeting. And here are some things to take away from it. So as much as possible, we do like to keep each other informed and be part of those things. But I do think there is that, there's, there's always that struggle.
Well, Cindy, to go back to your question, I think all of you are invited on a rotating basis, no more than three, to come to our meetings.
Yep.
It's kind of like Noah's Ark.
And there will be an invitation for our September meeting for, to, to, we've already met with Casey and Tlisha. But Cindy, Cindy, Casey and Cindy. But, and we knew there were limits on the numbers. But there will be, we're going to have another gathering in September, which we would like two other council members to, three other council members to cover.
Great. All right. Well, I want to be conscious of, yeah, go ahead, Jay.
We could also use some help with recruiting some new members that we've got, we've got members from six, five, and four. But Carolyn, I think, is leaving us. She's moving out of the area. So she's a Ward six person. But we've got three members from Ward three, and four from Ward one. So we could use some help in some of the other wards in terms of recruitment suggestions. That'd be great.
Great. All right. Well, with that, I also want to be conscious of the fact that our City TV folks need to transition, and give them a little breathing room. I just, again, want to extend my thanks to the rec committee, the rec department, and thank you all for being here tonight. It was very helpful.